Gentlemen, would you see the agenda before you? We do have one add-on that I would ask that we put under business item number four, which is the pass-through sewer treatment rate that you have been sent a copy of to consider. With that, do we have any other corrections or additions to the agenda? Hearing any, do I have a motion? Do we accept this agenda?
How many will you set the agenda as a minute?
Second.
Motion is second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
As opposed? It has been the stance as corrected. Tonight, it gives us pleasure to have a presentation of two of our officers that have joined our police department, and the chief has brought them here tonight for us to administer the oath, and it gives me pleasure to do that. We'll take James Bryan City if he will come up first, and we will be administering the oath. Right, it's a pleasure. And just repeat after me as we do the oath. Aye.
Aye.
James Bryan City.
James Bryan City.
The undersigned.
The undersigned.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
May be.
May be.
Established.
Established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
That I will be alert.
That I will be alert.
Vigilant.
Vigilant.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any manner.
In any manner.
Or on account of.
Or on account of.
Personal biases.
Personal biases.
Prejudice.
Prejudice.
Or any other way.
Or any other way.
That I will faithfully and impartially execute.
That I will faithfully and impartially execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a law enforcement officer.
As a law enforcement officer.
According to the best of my skills.
According to the best of my skills.
Abilities.
Abilities.
And judgment.
And judgment.
So that we got.
So that we got.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
(applause) But for these copies, one is for your file, and one is for your manual, or wherever you'd like to put it. In your family room, or there for your town, in the court. If you would look around and present yourself to the council. We'd be glad to hear it. (inaudible). Okay, Black, if you'll come forward please. (inaudible) will do the same matter. I could look you closer at that though, even if it's a couple.[254.54][254.54](laughing). All right, if you will repeat after me, you wrote the volumes. I, Dwayne Douglas Calvin Gillis.
I, Dwayne Douglas Calvin Gillis.
The undersigned.
The undersigned.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will faithfully and bear true allegiance.
That I will faithfully and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be.
Or may be.
Established for the government.
Established for the government.
thereof.
thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
That I will be alert.
That I will be alert.
Vigilant.
Vigilant.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any manner or account of.
In any manner or account of.
Personal biases.
Personal biases.
Or prejudice.
Or prejudice.
And that I will faithfully and impartially execute.
And that I will faithfully and impartially execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a law enforcement officer.
As a law enforcement officer.
According to the best of my skills.
According to the best of my skills.
Abilities.
Abilities.
And judgment.
And judgment.
So that we got.
So that we got.
Congratulations. (applause). You have a long night too, so thank you all. One is for your file, and one is for your manual, as far as discussed. Your town being as well, but we, again, congratulations. If you will present yourself, yes.
(inaudible).
It's one of the pleasures we have at this meeting is to bring on our new staff and swearing in our officers, and again, we appreciate the work that our police department, our service, and people in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, with that presentation, we have no public hearings. Is there anyone in our community who wishes to be heard tonight under citizen comments? Feel forward, please come forward at this time. We'll just come to the voting right there, and just state your name with the council, and we recognize you as being the DAV, so we will thank you.
I'm Redford Hill, and I'm the commander of DAV Chapter 44, and Mr. Lewis is going to pass out a turn over a letter that I have here, so I'm not going to read the whole thing. I just want to go over a couple of most important things, I guess. And our chapter, we're all disabled American veterans, and we furnish transportation for veterans to go to all the veteran clinics, like Durham, Fayetteville, Raleigh, and our drivers, they put in 1,300 hours, a little over 1,300 hours last year, just driving the van to and from these clinics, and we have service officers that help the serviceman get his disability. We visit the veterans that's in the rest homes, and our ladies auxiliary, they have different functions, and they make money and buy them little things, you know, personal hygiene things, or maybe socks or something like that, just, you know, to let them know that we're still thinking about them. And we are in the building that is at 1500 Hook and Dury Road, and our understanding is that that building, I don't know when, but is scheduled to be torn down, and we are here asking that maybe the city can find us another place to go, because we don't have money, and we run in vans, we do different things for the veterans, and we try to, you know, work with the city, the council, the state, whatever, and I think Johnston County itself has over 14,000 veterans, and it's Johnston County, and a lot of those are disabled, and now we're getting even more disabled coming back from Iraq and Afghanistan, so we need help bad, and if y'all can help us find a building that, you know, we can call home, it'd be greatly appreciated. We can't just go out, you know, to a restaurant or something and have meetings, because we have vans and all that stuff, we have to take care of, we have to keep up with records of what we do, how many veterans we take care of, we have to have someplace for the service officers to get with the veterans, to fill out the paperwork and send in for them to get disability pay. We just, we do everything we can for the veterans, and we need a place to call home, and the building's taken away from us, and we hit the streets, I don't know, I guess we lose our vans and everything else, so we would appreciate anything that y'all can do for us, as far as getting a building or whatever, and if there's anything that we can help y'all with, do for y'all, we are here.
Commander, there's a little bit of misunderstanding, I think, based on when you and I spoke, if I may, to the ladies of council, at the time we spoke, you get gentlemen were asking for us to give you the place permanently.
Yes.
And I advised you at that point, we couldn't give you the place permanently, but it will stay there as long as you needed it until it's those time we needed the property, the city, and that's still the position, as far as tearing it down right now, that's not the position of the city unless the council makes that decision, but to maintain the operations of Chapter 44 there would be something that we've allowed as the city to let you stay there at no cost, basically, and house it there, but through the improvements, you folks have been doing what improvements needed to have a sort of the agreement.
Correct.
So I wanted to make sure there was not any confusion on we were going to tear down a building, that's not the case, unless the council says otherwise, but as far as us being allowing you to have the building and the land, that was our discussion, we could not do it at that point.
Okay.
I just want to make sure it was clear on that.
Okay, well, it could be some of my fault, I was understanding that they were going to tear it down and make a park on up there, that's what I was.
No, not at this point, now, it does join our recreation fields in the backside there, where it is very congested, and a lot of people who park on that area for soccer games back there, I think, on right team, but as of right now, there are no plans to tear it down, but such time there was, that's the reason we couldn't just say, it's a building in your land, but just go it.
Right.
City may have a big picture board, but that was the discussion.
That was the discussion. I just want to make sure the council's clear.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm not advocating this going and giving it, you know, this, but can't we make some kind of agreement, so this will have an end, you know, where we will, they will have some kind of document stating the town, the plan that we need, so, you know, it's a legal, it's a document, so they are here or something, so people can say things like this happen.
We do have a general agreement, some are a month-to-month thing.
We need something better than the gentleman's bringing a handshake now, we need something to tell people.
Well, actually, I think it is in writing, but it's really a month-to-month, if I'm correct.
Yes, they have some of the agreement, I think Mr. Smith did it, that, I can't remember the number of days that either party can, it's either, I think it's, seems like it's 60 or 90 days, we have to, one has to give notice to the other if plans are made, either for us to take over the building or for them to leave, but I can get, you know, a copy to the council, and if these folks are able to get.
Well, we can do that, and the manager will make sure it works, the manager will need it.
You know, I think, I think that this is probably just as important as anything else in this town, we have as many veterans as we do, so I think they probably need to have something that really incorporate into the town, so if you want something out.
Well, if you will remember, the council was nice enough to offer this when the county pulled down the building and ran them out, they had nowhere to go, and we gave them this building ourselves and housed them there since then, at basically no charge.
With all due respect, I mean, I think we do have an agreement in place, it is located on future property for the extension of our recreation facilities and so forth, I think we have an agreement in place. Does that have a copy on the agreement, man?
He has, he has a copy, yeah.
So I think we, I think we have an agreement in place, and so I think we're okay, I think there's just a little miscommunication as far as tearing the building down, but I don't have any knowledge of, of any ways to carry it, and we don't say, so I think we're done.
You know, what I'm really getting at is, I think that the town, we could look, I'd look to, you know, try to give them a tip where they're home, I'll give them a couple of bits, and know that, you know, as long as they working with the DAV, that they do it at home, so, yeah, some reg, the town will make some arrangements to make sure that they, they be secure in Smithfield.
You're right, thank you, sir. Just look with the manager, the manager, if we have future issues, he would be glad to talk with me about that.
Okay, fine.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone else under consent agenda? (inaudible).
I wanted the citizens and the staff and the council to know that the decision we have elected to reschedule tomorrow night's fireworks celebration with the uncertainty of the weather that we've had, and it's a 50/50 chance of thunderstorms tomorrow night, and on our luck, we're going to cancel it and delay it, or reschedule it, and of course we'll have a moonlit night tomorrow night, but anyway, we had to go ahead and make a decision before we got too far, before we got too committed to our obligations, financial obligations, and in checking with the staff, as well as the entertainment and the fireworks power techniques, we rescheduled it for Sunday, Sunday evening. I've checked with the local churches downtown, and nobody's going to be affected regarding that, so nobody's having anything, so with holiday going on, everything, everybody's kind of taken, taken a week off, so to speak, from activities, so it's not going to disrupt anybody, just want to let you know that we've, we've rescheduled that till Sunday. I guess we would need your blessings for that before I go any further, I don't know if that's protocol or what, but.
Well, we just said that when you added that slide, and there's a consent, and that's what I was, boys, you did a lot of the ice weather for Sunday night, man.
I've checked, I've checked the weather, and they're calling for sunny skies starting on Saturday and Sunday, but we hope to go ahead and get this in. We discussed about the possibility of having later on in August or September, maybe go back to school, but I'd hate to just be shooting off $7,000, $8,000 worth of fireworks and another offer, for no other reason, just to get that off me. One other thing that I wanted to share with, with you, back in the fall, back early in the fall, the DSDC, with this organization's blessings, made an application with the Rule Center regarding the St. Joseph's The Pines project, which is the Obolock Maris Building across from West Smithfield, and it was posted on the Rule Center website yesterday afternoon at 5:00 o'clock, we have not received official word in form of a letter, I don't believe from Mr. Sapsin, but it's on the website in a press release, that we have won $200,000 for that project. This is an adult daycare facility, as well as a medical facility, state-of-the-art, it's projected to have about 40 jobs over there with the average salary of about $55,000, so this is a huge economic benefit for, for West Smithfield, and there's also that should the indications show that they're successful, they can double their employers over there, as well as look at future growth into the rest of the facility, which came up, so I do not want to get the call before, of course, on that one, but we're very excited, we'll certainly do thank that this is what I supported this town with the application of.
Thank you very much. Anyone else under citizen's comments? Good on them. Okay, we'll move right through to the consent agenda, do I have a motion on our consent agenda?
Certainly.
Motion is stated. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, our first business item for tonight is the request to apply for the NC Partif Grant, Grant Assisting Partnership to Build a Miracle, approved resolution by 29th.
I'll thank you, Mayor and Council. As you all know, the council approved some time ago, these, the two projects that we'd like to apply for a grant, one being the Miracle League Baseball Softball Field, and the other being an inclusion park. Those two groups of folks formed one committee called the Partnership to Build a Miracle, and they're fundraising right now together to meet the goal of about a million dollars, or just a little bit over, to build these two facilities at Community Park, which you all have approved. What this group would like for us to do is if municipality is apply for the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Grant, only municipalities can apply for those grants, they couldn't apply for that one on their own, it has to be run through municipality, administered by municipality, and overseen by the finance department, the local government as well, so that's why, that's where the town would come in. They are not asking the town to help with any of that match, they are about halfway home in raising up to $500,000, which we're not sure if the maximum amount is going to stay at $500,000 allowed under the grant, they may reduce that, but the maximum amount right now is at $500,000, and the grant cycle is that this, the grant would be due at the end of January 2014, and it's awarded in May, May or June of 2014, then you have, I think it's two, two to three years to complete the project. So what we would like to do, or we requested to do, is on behalf of that committee, to be the venue for them to go to the state, apply for that money, and help them administer that grant, or us administer that grant, and again, they will provide the match for the grant. I can answer any questions for you, and also Dwight Morris and Chris Key from that committee are here, if you'd like to ask them any questions.
Just got one question regarding the matching funds, if, can you explain to me if the council or the town is applying for the loan, for the grant, excuse me, and say, for instance, we win, and a match is required, what if the Partnership for Children does not, is not able to come up with $500,000, and takes two years to finish the project, or we're midstream, the project, when is the, when is the match due? Well, is it due at the beginning?
Well, what happens, yes, what, what happens is, you spend your money first, so the part, that committee would have to turn those funds over to the town before you can ever, before we could ever spend it, so no town funds would have to be spent, they would have to give the town that money to spend, and then once you spend it, you apply for reimbursements. So what can happen is, at the time, it's not, again, the, the application is due January 31st of 2014, so at that time, what we could do is come back to the council, that January meeting, and say, you know, they have $405,000, that'd be the maximum amount that they could apply for at that time, and obviously their plans are, at the end of December this year, have every dollar they need, again, I'll let, I'll let them, but that's how it's administered, we do have to spend it first and then you reimburse it, okay?
So basically, if you, if they only had $250,000, they could, they could only, they could just apply for two weeks.
Exactly, yeah.
And I, that's a great question, and I spoke to the mayor about this a couple months ago, we're requesting the full amount, just half a million dollars at this point, when it is time to actually apply for grant at the end of the year, whatever we have in cash that we have raised at that point, is all we'll be applying for, and that cash will move to an escrow account, be protected for the, protect the council as well as us, so we will apply for no more than what we have in cash on hand and move it to escrow account before we apply for the grant. The town will no way be left responsible for any monies at all.
Mr. White, I think on the application is due January 15th or Sunday, I think it takes them four, five years to process the application. Yeah, they, they. It doesn't happen, right, but, and then once they make your order, they send you this time that goes there, they send you a contract, so really, the real date of acceptance is that contract date, would that be either easily be June or July of next year?
By that time, I hope they will have raised as much as possible, and so we won't have to really commit it before we have to look until that time, and whether it's $500,000 we hope, or whether it's $425,000, we will, we will get it happening now.
What's, Chris, what's the estimated cost for this project? $1 million to build, or raising one and a half million, half million is to maintain the park and the ball field, $1.5 million to build a park, and we currently have half million dollars in cash and commitments, so we're halfway there, we're halfway to getting it.
And I just have one other question, and I think this is a great, great project, definitely have been for it from, from the beginning, but as far as, this is more a question for Tim, as far as applying for this grant, do you have any other needs from your department, as I assume if we apply for this grant this year, and like, for instance, we win it, whatever our chances are of receiving another one, you can't say, I mean, can you apply each year?
Yes, we can. I mean, also, we've got two, back to back, for Recreation and Water Center, right at a million dollars, and we were given that, it may have been a year, but I can't remember, but it was two of them, either two or three years, so yeah, you can do that, the, and yeah, we do also have a lot of these that we could, but, you know.
Right, this is not a me, and it's just complements our entire recreation program, I'm not saying that at all, but, you know.
Yeah, but there's no doubt this will, there's nothing like this, even one of these things in the county, and I don't think in Wayne and Wilson County, and of course, there isn't Wayne, so this is definitely, you know, these types of facilities for children and people with disabilities is something that is greatly, greatly needed, but, and the other thing is, they look extremely favorable, favorably upon projects, where there's this much community support, and obviously, you look, there's politics involved, so again, the city may, that committee will be important, so that the committee will, this committee, I know will set their sights on, yeah, we could definitely come back in a year or two and, and be applied again.
All right, well, thank you, that addressed my question, and again, like Chris, appreciate your efforts with this, and you guys have been heavily involved in it, I think it's a great project and complement our overall recreation needs for all citizens around.
Chris, I have a question, you said you're raising a half a million dollars for maintenance.
Yes.
Is that going to be a fund that you hold separate and apart, that is for maintenance on the road?
That's correct, the, once we raise the money, the Partnership to Build a Miracle will dissolve, Partnership for Children will be responsible for the park, and the Miracle League in Johnston County will be responsible for the baseball field, two different entities. Half a million dollars will be divided between the two to, to maintain the facilities. County of Smithfield is graciously free to mow the grass and trim the shrubs and things like that, but as the facilities themselves wear, that money will allow us to repair slides or, you know, ball field or things of that nature. We don't have to come back to anybody at a future date for more money to fix something, we'll give it all to them one shot and take care of it.
The baseball field is like a deposit field.
Rubberized deposit surface, yes, sir, looks really cool.
I saw that vision come to life for Martin McLan through Sunday School class a number of years ago, and he stuck with it, and has a good team with him too, so.
Yes, it's a, there are Miracle League fields and parks in Cary and Wilmington, and this is the only place that we have found in the southeastern. This is the only place that we have found in the southeastern United States that has them both on the same piece of land. So this is not just special in North Carolina, but for, this is part of the country, we can't find anything like it where they're on the same property. So it'll be a very special site.
Any more questions for Chris, for like?
I'm looking to approve the request. Motion, Mr. State, those in favor, aye. Opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Second item for the notch business is update of town strategic plan. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I want to hand out this under desk before you. It's got the memo and you'll see the town strategic plan on the regarding line.
Look at that, that reflects from our retreat which we, which occurred in late January of this year. We discussed many topics at that time and one of our goals and objectives is set forth here on goal one, which I'll read or summarize for you, is develop a viable economic development plan and strategy, objective one A. Town manager will create a management plan and present initial draft to the board by June 30th, 2013. That includes feasibility of hiring an economic director, a report on the budget needed for various levels and types of development, a report that identifies, provides guidance on steps to identify in the future what economic sectors are important to the town. And the one, objective one B, the town will publicize existing economic development programs and initiatives. On the next page, what I've got before you, and again, this is really just to introduce this basic management plan to you. It is that proposed management plan, obviously I've indicated as a draft plan, it's something for the town to consider or the council to consider, certainly get feedback. And again, you know, this plan is really a plan to how we're going to do economic development. This is not purported to be any kind of economic development study. We have some of those in the past and others are out there for the county in general. This is more of what can we do in Smithfield that we can control and what can we do to move forward in our general economic development strategies and approaches. If I can, I'd just like to summarize, I tried to lay it out in kind typical management plan form, which is identify under room number one, the plan's scope. As you can see there, the objective of this management plan is to outline just basic steps to allow the town to improve its economic development activities and a general approach to both sustaining existing business and attracting new business, development or expansion. Pretty general goal, but I think that was the nature of the, of the discussion we had in our retreat earlier this year. Plan organization, essentially Mayor, pretty simple as we handle most things. This will come through my office and I'll in turn make presentations to the council after directives and input from the council and try to get input from the council and other stakeholders in the community that the council wants to include or certainly tries to include in that discussion. Part of those stakeholders, it would be my recommendation to include certainly the business community, but also all aspects of the business community, not just retailers, but retailers, industrial businesses in town, office and professional businesses and certainly residents in our residential sectors of the town. What form that takes is certainly subject to the council's direction on that. Plan budget, essentially Mayor, what I'm saying here is that although we have no specific funds budgeted for this, I know it was, it was discussed during the budget process, at least a desire of council to, to ramp up our economic development efforts. And merely on this budget summary, I'm just pointing out that there are some funds, whether it's in the general fund contingency fund or one of the utility funds, contingency funds or more specifically in our water sewer fund, we actually have a line item in our budget this year that has not been used in the past, but we used it this year for fund balance and economic development activities, which certainly would fit these expenditures and that is a fund of $322,000 and that's in the water and sewer side. I believe it would be permissible, in fact, I'm certain of it, to use utility funds for economic development efforts because basically you're creating a better customer base and a stronger customer base for utilities when you encourage economic development in our town. So I think that would be a legitimate use. So just, I bring that up because a lot of times there are questions about what funds are available, if any, and this is a possibility, certainly it would take council approval to do those funds and that's something that should be considered. Room number four, Mayor, plan initiatives and this is, I put the notation specific, again, these are just ideas, some which were discussed and which have been discussed outside the retreat. These are things that I need, certainly some feedback from the council, whether there's, if that's tonight or certainly at a later date and whatever avenue of input you wish to provide is certainly acceptable. I want to throw out a few of these initiatives and just get your feedback at sometime in the next month or so so we can report on the ones that you, you have an interest in. Item A, I'll just summarize again, evaluate the feasibility of the town creating and funding a full-time economic development position. That was a specific request of the town board made at the retreat. The preliminary analysis there tells me that a full-time position salary would be paid in the market based on the league survey, somewhere between approximately $42,000 and $56,000. Of course, there'd be additional funds for benefits and other matching announced. There's some other expenditures for travel. These positions typically encourage some travel as part of their basic month-to-month tasks, whether it's attending local meetings in the region or even out-of-state meetings to try to attract new businesses. I projected at a minimum, this would take $65,000 to $70,000 per year to fund this position. Again, that's just a number of starting analysis for you to consider and I know there was some discussion and it looked like there was at least some interest, some members of the council to consider that as a, as a possibility. So that, that's a preliminary analysis on the cost of that and again, going back to fund in the, in the budget, that'll be of course a year-to-year amount, but there are some funds that could, that could be used for that position. Again, you know, obviously if you have a new position, that's a, expected to be a year-to-year position, that would be something that would be paid funding each year. Also, just as a matter of clarity, most of the towns of our size, even a little bit bigger, they typically combine these economic development positions. In most cases, you'll see it combined with either some sort of community assistance, housing or planning area where they have some roles outside of just pure economic development and also some roles within that other department, wherever that function may be, would be the way you typically see these positions set forth. So that's just food for thought and something for the council to consider. That was a specific request from the retreat. Item B, create initiatives to serve as development incentives for new business attraction or expansion. I have discussed this with a few council people, I think, as I was trying to put it together. Mayor, what this initiative is suggesting, and again, there's lots of room for additional input and different ways to finally see how this takes shape in its final form, but the basic idea here is to allow the city to put together a package for basically tax rebates, it'll be property tax rebates or utility payment rebates for businesses that come into town that need a minimal hiring, new job creation. That number of course is subject to what our plan calls for, it could be 10, it could be 15, it could be 20. I think a sliding scale of something above 10 to 15, you get an ability to be rebated additional funds. And again, two areas that I think we have available. And again, it's not, not like you're waiving taxes, you're rebating taxes, which you're allowed to do in North Carolina if you meet certain requirements. So we can't give them a lesser tax rate, we, they have to pay their taxes and we refund those taxes if for instance, let's say the, the goal was we'll rebate, rebate your property taxes if you hire more than 20 people for three years or five years. That rebate is not on the existing property. So if they come in and buy a piece of property for say $300,000, that's five acres, whatever the existing taxes are now that would continue. It would only be on the improvement that they made to that property, i.e. the structure they're building there and the new tax value that would, that would be applied to that structure. That's the typical tax incentive fund that you see throughout the state in a number of places. Something to think about, what that does for us is really, it just delays the town's tax benefit. And of course, like most towns, you know, that's how we basically pay our bills and pay our employees and our police and fire services through cap property taxes. I'm not going to think that's the main, obviously, use of those funds. And we'll need those funds to pay for new businesses that are, that are created. What it does is it delays that just a little bit. Except taking it the first year of building becomes of use because they're creating jobs and give them a little bit of a break and rebate those funds, give them a little bit of time to get their business going and successful. And then we can either do a slow incremental, they pay 20% one year, 4% the next year, eventually get the full rate, we can come up with those plans. This is really a conceptual presentation of that and see if the council has an interest. I think it could be an effective plan, it won't ruin businesses overnight, but if we can put a good stop playing together, I think it's something we can market, it's something that we can sell instead of. So the tax incentive is one aspect. The other incentive, which I think is actually fairly unique, is the rebate for utility payment. My concept is to present a plan, again, hopefully in tandem with a tax incentive plan, that we can tell business, a new business, whether again, it's a retailer or hopefully a larger industrial kind of business, come to Smithfield and we will guarantee for again, at how kind that we're comfortable with, three years or five years, that we will only charge you on our utility side, the lowest utility rate in our region. Well, I don't know what that region is, it would have to probably be a four, five, six or eight county region. We will only charge you that maximum amount, which means our electric rate, which of course we get some criticism for business, we will match the lowest rate, which in this case we'd do energy rate for the business, which I think we'll find very quickly that our rates are not that much higher with our incentives that are existing now. So I think we can afford to do that for new business. Our retail other rates are actually even more competitive. I think we can match that without too much of a loss in our electric department. So we'll still be getting some money, it'll be a lesser amount, it'll be a rebate program to again, give a new business a little bit of a break when they come in, they choose to come to Smithfield and give them a little bit of help getting started. And then after the period, whether it's three years, five years, seven years, hopefully they're on their feet and hopefully by that time our rates will be something they can handle and we're all working to get our rates to be more affordable and by the time we get there and they arrive at that five to seven year period, the rate differential between us and in this case, Duke Energy will be that great anyway and they'll be happy to pay our rate and be good happy customers, interested in this in Smithfield. Those are the two, two arms of that incentive program. And I think if we can put that together, the tax incentive program, we could also ask the county to, to partner with us and see if they would also do the same thing with their property rates, which they would be able to do. They've been interested in economic development, that's a partnership that I think we could have a good conversation about. Obviously can't speak for the county, would be something I'd like to encourage. And if we can do this, I think we could set standards for the programs, I think we could differentiate what Smithfield has to offer and those who criticize, well, I can't come to Smithfield because of the tax rate or because of utility rate, we can address that at least for that period of time and we can make it like no other offering, I think anybody else has in this area. I think it'll set us apart and I think it's something we could brag about and something that we could advertise and promote our town with a good helping message, so by our chamber, by our, hopefully our local office and others who, who business in the town. So anyway, that's, that's a lot to, to hand out to you. All I'm asking is that you hear it, give me some feedback and as a direction at the appropriate time on those, on those two initiatives. Moving on to item C, and give you a little bit of short, increase on C, increased promotion of the town's existing economic incentive plans and better promote the advantages of living and working in Smithfield. One I pointed there, we already have a pretty aggressive, I would say, residential building incentive program that's already on the books, I think we can promote a little bit better. That'd be something we could do in tandem with this other business plan that I've outlined for you. That's something that we could highlight on our website. And our website is, you'll hear more about that in my, in my management report for the month, our website. We do have a new version that's really just about ready to be rolled out, very close, in fact, we've got almost a 90% version that's already up, not available to public, but up for review by council and others. And we have on that website a whole economic development section, some of it, I, with Chris's group at downtown Smithfield, I guess he's got a pretty good presentation on downtown and other properties and we'll add our own elements to that website that will help us along with these plans that we can highlight and really promote. And I want to make it something that especially with new businesses, we can not hide behind or hide from our rate, we can actually advertise with this program, kind of what we have and try to work to get more businesses here. But that's that C incentive that I hope we can put something together that will, that will help us and something that we can maybe turn a negative into a positive for Smithfield pretty quickly. And I think right now with the way the economy's, looks like it's turning to the positive, it's a great time to have each other's employees. Item D, work to better streamline the general permitting process for new construction within the town's jurisdiction. In short, our own system for just Smithfield is actually pretty straightforward, not too difficult, but some of the problem is, and again, it's not the county's problem, but some of it's the coordination. As you know, the county does our building inspection and works hand-in-hand with our fire department on certain fire marshal activities. There's a little bit of, I think, lack of coordination on the way some of those are scheduled and some of the way the COs are finalized on that. I think we can do a little bit better and we just need to get our own a little bit cleaner, a little bit more direct. We're actually, and we truth be told, we're actually in pretty good shape. When you add the county to the mix, if I'm an outside party coming to Smithfield trying to build something or get a permit, it can be a little confusing. Again, because the county's in its world, we're in our world and sometimes those worlds don't always talk like they should. We're at Smithfield, I think we take responsibility for that, we help the county and make it streamlined, make it work a little bit smoother. I think it works if you know the system pretty well, but if it's your first time or even your second time or you haven't been through it in a couple of years, I think we can do, make a better effort in terms of making that a little bit smoother. And I know I've spoken with both the fire chief and also the plan director about some of what they see in terms of when it goes from us to the county, some of those that somebody can get lost, losses or making that two-block walk out of county, we need to kind of fix that negative a little bit easier for you, so I think we can do that, that's something that we're working on and where it's started. So I would say we're going to keep doing that and again, not a huge problem where it's just a train wreck and we're really slow in doing stuff. Our handling of what we do, we do well efficiently, just when it goes to the county. And again, the county does a good job in its own world, it's just making those two worlds talk a little bit better and then get together and hang down the same page. And we've got some good ideas of how to do that. Item E, work with the county, the chamber, downtown Smithfield, the visitors bureau and others to better coordinate the entire county slash regions approach and management of its economic development efforts. This conversation process frankly has already begun. We've had some informal discussions really through the chamber, the chambers meeting group that we have. Chris is part of that meeting group that we talked about, our, our economic status. And this group really involves a couple of local towns, Selma, Benson, the chamber, Chris and, and Clayton has joined us recently, really talk about what we're doing and what we're not doing really as a region, not just Smithfield, not just Clayton, not just Benson, but as a region. And what we feel like the county has an economic development group and I think they've got their hands full. And again, we want to help the county in its effort because that impacts us and we feel like sometimes it's a lack of, not on purpose, but again, it's that lack of communication we found in talking to other cities and towns, that they're having the same issues we are with a coordinated effort. And I think you'll hear time and time again when you go to these economic development meetings in other areas and when they're talking about a regional approach that they find and the evidence shows that communities that work together that aren't just literally fighting amongst each other are more successful than the ones who try to grab every piece of bread that drops from the sky and try to rub the other one the wrong way and just fight them. If they work together and the best product goes to the town who does the best job, everybody's basically on the same page, everybody wins and you get more, you get more businesses that way. That seems to be the model in that regard. The county, they've, they've attended a couple of these meetings with us in the last couple of months to their credit, the chairman and also the county manager. They've agreed to call a meeting sometime and I believe in Chris, they've said in August or September to have a joint stakeholder meeting with really all the towns in Johnston County, with the county's economic development group or representatives at their front to talk about really the process of how does that group work and are they really serving the town and the whole area in the best manner possible? And what can we do as towns to help that effort a little bit, move a little bit faster, a little bit stronger? I think case in point is, I think Johnston County has been in the, in the second and third fastest growing county in the state for a few years now. That's a great achievement. I don't think it's because of those efforts, I think it's because we're on 95 and we're in the, I'm on 95. I think we can be first by a long stretch if we have a better coordinated effort. I think we're basically, as I like to use the analogy, we're picking up crumbs and apples that fall off the tree that haven't thrown our way. I think if we had a bigger basket and a little bit more of a concerted effort, we could not only be second or third, we could be first and probably be in the top four or five in the entire nation in terms of that effort. And Smithfield is well, well positioned, so is Benson and so is Clayton for that matter for different reasons to attract different businesses. We're getting people because they want to be in Johnston County, they made that decision long before they picked up the phone, talked to anyone in Johnston County. It's just a matter of where they actually end up. I think we can do a better job of working together and certainly we can take advantage of that. I think Smithfield is in great position to do that. And again, really, I think to the credit of our local chamber, Chris and others in the area, that conversation has started several months ago, but I think it's reaching a, a good level, a positive conversation. We want to keep it that way and see what we, what we can do forward. And that's part of, I think, should be a focus of, of the town for the next six or eight months if we can get it. eight months, if we can do it. Mayor, with that, I've obviously put a question open ended for other initiatives, and certainly, you know, I'm all ears, anything along these lines, or something I'm completely missing that's not part of that plan, but under our schedule with our strategic plan, I'm going to give you this report, and keep our ball rolling in that right direction, and certainly if you want to email, digest this, all of the above, I'm certainly all ears, and want to make sure we keep it moving. So Mayor, if there's any questions or comments, I'll be happy to take those, or I'll just wait to hear some community input at the time.
Okay. Any questions at this point from the manager, or just, of course, we'll be tasking them to do that, but this is a beginning step, nothing's good.
Yeah, one thing I'd like to make comment, the manager gave us some good points, but the one point we seem to always overlook is the citizens of the residential, our residential areas, we need to continue to try to improve, you know, the streets, the builders, the drainage and everything, and that should always be core of any economic improvement. I mean, you have people that tell us about the downtown, how we can deal with all of these things, but when it comes down to, you know, residence, that's really paying our bills, it seems that, you know, they go black and don't get the proper recognition that they should get, such as the streets being cleaned and everything. You know, this is a pretty good sized town, and how many streets we have, and the streets clean, the streets are sure the streets, you know, stuff in the residential areas, people, builders and things, you know, I mean, you know, they do a good job cleaning up and following the leaves and stuff like that, but we still have the whole summer, you know, that we need all the things done, you got the grass clippings and everything, and people now that do grass and don't know nothing to do with, push all the grass clippings and everything out in the street. We need to deal with that. Some of those things we need to deal with, not that I'm trying to say that this is not important, this is important, we actually, this is important, this is important for the residential, I think people, when they come to walk into this town, look and say, well, I think I'm staying.
That's a part of, or be part of our goals and objectives, so I think that feedback will continue to go with. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like for us to discuss this a little further, especially meeting with the mayor, all this information, it's just one detail amongst the council, and another meeting with the mayor.
Yes, definitely, in fact, I think it's urgent that we would have, you know, worked out or something towards something like this, developing this treaty plan, so at this point, the manager's simply asking for input from the council, so I would encourage you to do that, and then we can surely schedule some other times together. Okay. Is that a feature of you, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, moving along to our update of the smart grid process for the town's water sewer electrical systems. Does the manager, or how do you begin?
Mayor, again, I issued a small summary of the smart grid process, and I know it seems like this has been on hold, or kind of spinning in the same place for a long time, and in some respects it has. Again, just so the public's aware, the smart grid process, without trying to go into too much detail, basically that's a process whereby we basically have an electronic system with our meters, both water and sewer meter, and also our electric meters. That would allow the town to basically, from a central location, whether it's town hall or the utilities, the utilities office, they could read meters without going out to house by house, and, you know, actually physically reading meters, or even doing the drive by with the handheld units reading meters. They can read them typically with a, you know, with a radio kind of fed metering system, they can read them from a central location, and get the updates for that metering. So that's one advantage there, which makes savings on certainly meter reading costs and other items. Another part of a smart grid system, you're allowed to turn on and off meters to a certain extent, certainly on the electric side, not so much on the water side, but on the electric side, from a central location. Also, you're allowed to, particularly on, again, on the electric side, you're allowed to do what's called a pay as you go system, which means that on accounts where there are either problems, or there are issues with payment, or just by the choice of a property owner, you can have what's called, in general terms, a pay as you go system, which allows a person to get the appropriate connection to their meter, and they basically can supply the meter and get a readout typically online on a website, or other central locations, they can tell how much power they have left. So for instance, if they will make a hundred dollar payment, and then just see how much they use, and then determine when they get close to five or ten dollars left on their payment, make another payment at their, you know, based on their time, they can do that, that helps them keep up with their metering, and also lets them control their cash flow a little bit better. Certainly such a system, because it is electronically monitored, it gives the town immediate and accurate input in terms of monitoring outages. What these meters do is basically will tell you exactly the location of a meter that is out, that's not working, and sends back a signal to the central office, and we can track that, at least within a couple of hours, if not immediately, depending on the time of day, when that meter went out, and if there's a problem. During a larger storm event, we'd be able to tell exactly what streets and what meters are out during that event, and we'll be able to disperse and send out our crews to an area with a lot more accuracy to fix those meters that are out much more quickly, as opposed to having to test, or look in the windows, or wait for the phone, and get calls on that. Which of course would certainly help with our emergency phone call system, which is certainly overtaxed at times, including recently. Another issue with this that would be positive, is that with our older meters, we have changed out some of them, with our older meters that have not been replaced, by replacing the meters, and that's just the physical and the water meter side, that's just a physical change of the meter, with the new electronic version, certainly the newer meters will provide more accurate reads, typically the older meter is, the slower it reads, and tends to underread the use of a system, which means that there's a percentage of underreading of the meters for all the meters that are out there that have, say, ten or more years on them. So with replace the new meters, I don't know if we get the electronic advantages, but also just the physical mechanical reading of those meters will be needed with this new system. Basically, it would also give the consumer better control over his or her use of their utilities. They would be able to get online, and most of these systems, and maybe a little bit about how they express this, to get online and be able to gauge how much power we're using, when they're using it, and get some feedback on their actual use of their, in the electric sense, how much power we're using during the day, and certainly with the help of our central office, we can provide those reports to them, if they need help with them, in providing, you know, when they're having efficient use of electric, or when they're using more electric than they should, if they have questions about their bill, why their bill's high, we could help them try to figure out that, in addition to our typical kind of energy audit, we could actually do this on a basis that would give them a time, for instance, in the evening hours when the power is used at a high rate, we can help them isolate those timeframes and have a better control of use of the power. So Mayor, that's the summary of the smart grid system, what's the advantage of it to the town? Well, the town embarked on this journey in terms of the smart grid some year and a half or two years ago, really long ago, I think four or five years ago, but in earnest, when it started actually budgeting funds for it, about a year and a half ago, to look into and fund this system. The Electric Cities group, they issued an RFP back in August of 2012, they got responses to that RFP back in November and December of 2012, from a good strong group of 10 to 15 different responses, they've analyzed and have gone through those responses, and are still doing so frankly, and reviewing them, but what they've done is they've essentially narrowed that RFP down to two or three, there could be a fourth, but really I say two or three adequate providers of this smart grid system, and those are NextGrid, Cooper, and a firm referred to as SAIC, that are all, have provided full responses to the Electric Cities RFP. For you, we've heard a presentation from NextGrid, we've spoken with Cooper, and there was also a presentation from SAIC just recently last week. It appears that SAIC's meters that they use as part of their system will not be compatible with what we do, so essentially I would rule them out, which leaves us with NextGrid and Cooper, and we're still analyzing which of those two providers is the best fit for the town. We have some more work to do, we're going to meet with Cooper, and then hopefully with NextGrid in the next 30 days. What they do is they come in there, and they do a better audit in terms of the actual meters that we have, water versus electric, there's a few choices about preferences that we may have in terms of use, some A, B, and C kind of choices that will give us a better, a better specific fit for our needs, and then they can give us at least an initial price quote, preliminary one, and if we have interest at that point, they can give us a specific price quote, which is what we're going to bring to the council for approval with a recommendation accordingly. I just want to let the council know that's where we are, in terms of the cost, and again, this is entirely projected. My estimate for the cost right now is, and again, this is full blown system for all of our users, all of our meters being completely changed out, except for the newly installed water and sewer, and including the modules for the new electric feed, including all of what they call the gateway electric systems that would take in the data, and again, these meters, the electronic meters, they're fed kind of by frequencies, not by electric wire, so they operate through the air basically, and go back to our central office as opposed to underground or above ground wire, and that's really the benefit in how the system works so well. So if one house or one gateway that connects these, that go on top of typically streetlights, if it goes out in a storm event, the system automatically reroutes and finds another route to get to us at our central office. So it's a great system, it's been tested, it's out in many communities, not as many in North Carolina, but there are some that have been, but it is the delay of the future, and we'll certainly be ahead of the crowd in terms of this system, if we can process and get through it. The total cost, looks like it'll be somewhere between approximately two, 2.1 million and 2.5 million. Again, we'll have a better number for you, obviously, as we get there. Most of these companies have a financing available from anywhere from five years to two years. We also have budgeted, even just in this year's budget alone, some $450,000 between our water sewer fund and our electric fund. As I summarized in my memorandum, we also have available fund balances in both electric and water fund, and I think as we get that number more specific in terms of the total cost, you know, obviously, we'll take a harder look at how best to fund this system. I think we'll be able to use our present budget of funds, and also use some of our fund balance, pay down the cost, and then finance your money for handling it out, for probably four, five, or even seven years possibly, and make it extremely affordable for us to convert to this system. Once that conversion is made, townwide, there are some significant savings that will benefit. So if we can do this all at once, as opposed to doing 20% one year, 20% the next year, if we had that game, for instance, we spent about $150,000, as just an example, in our contract of meter reading per year right now. With this new system, once it's installed, we could probably reduce our contract of five or six meter readers, and that's a contract that we have, we have and have had for a couple of years now, we could probably reduce that down to one person, either by contract or hire, that just maintains, inspects, goes out for any kind of maintenance on a meter, down to one person, and absorb our net all those expense savings from that annual cost. There's other costs in terms of receivables that we will net by the system, that have been documented by those who have converted to this. If we put certain accounts on the prepay, basically, we don't have to worry about collections, or we can increase our deposit amounts, so that we're protected in that regard. As you know, you know, in some accounts, we do have some receivables that can add up very quickly, we can, I'll never say we can eliminate that entirely, we can certainly reduce that by a large number, that will help us. You know, if you have receivables of 80 to 150,000 dollars a year, and you're out and carry that every year, well, if you get rid of that in one year, you're not pushing that money every year, you're certainly, you're netting that 60, 70, 80,000 dollars in that year, and that would add up to what we would net in terms of expense savings, once this system is in place. So Mayor, I wanted to give you a, kind of just a summary of the facts, where we were, kind of a reminder of why we're doing this, and why we're looking into it, and again, Mr. Boykin and myself are anxious to get moving on it, we're trying to wait and get the information from Electric Cities, we have been to many, many meetings and updates, and a few presentations from some of these vendors, it is getting to be narrowed, but I just want to make sure the council understood that there are a lot of things happening on the outside, it does seem slow, and even to us, and we hear a lot more about it than you guys do, and I want to make sure you understood where we're working with it, and at the end of the day, I think it will be a positive change, it is a lot of money, but it will be a lot more detail. Once we get to a vendor or two vendors, it might be able to have them come and give you a full blown presentation, so you can ask and hear, and then refer, and see their presentation, get a better understanding, it's a lot of information, a lot of concepts that they throw at you at these meetings, they can be three or four, just to get up to speed and understand it, from when I started on the project. So again, I think we're in good shape, taking longer than we had hoped, but it's taken longer for everybody and the whole Electric Cities group to kind of get to where we are now, so I'm hoping we can be one of the first to move forward on it, and hopefully we can get an even better deal because of that incentive. So Mayor, that's where we are, just any questions about how we happen to address this.
Any questions? We remember there's an initiative too, with us and Benson and Selma working together collaboratively, about purchasing of these, not just even in addition to the RFP with Electric Cities, but our towns are still working together to keep that cost even lower, so you'll be hearing more about that. That pay as you go is, I've seen it actually work in other communities, and that does cut their receivables initially.
Mayor, I can't remember, I know we talked about this before, one of the, obviously one of the questions that comes to my mind is, once this system is completely installed, then what? Is there a service fee to these companies, do we have to pay them like we did in Red Lake?
Yeah, there typically is a carrying cost, and that depends on some of those choices we've got to make as to what we want, in terms of the monitoring, and we're trying to eliminate as much of that as possible, but typically there is a carrying cost for that year in, year out, of course, we'll have a hard number, depending on the vendor, and again, some of those choices, there are some that we've already eliminated that I think we just don't want and do not need, that are, you know, in the 100,000 dollars a year to give you more data that I think we need, basically. Maybe one day we'll want that, and if we do, we can upgrade and we can get that when we need it. We're trying to streamline it and make that as affordable in the future as possible, basically. So with our new billing software, with our new software for both our general fund, and our basically billing software that we're installing now as we speak, that's a little bit different animal, this is more of the field maintenance of our billing and collecting that data, the smart grid processes, so it's more of how we collect it and the actual metering of it is what this aspect pays for, but it also gives us a little bit of that in between, how to better handle our accounts, how to better, as the mayor indicated, give some options on pay as you go, and collect on certain accounts, basically, and also basically, reduce some of our manpower costs on the labor intensive parts of meter reading. And like I said, there are some carrying costs there, and those will be different between one vendor and the next, and certainly we'll have that itemized, you know, when we get that closer, get a specific quote from a vendor.
Sometimes what sounds great may not be as great as it is, this sounds like a wonderful program. You know, the issues that I would have to check into would be, are there any horror stories out there with this? What is the length of the warranty on the equipment, so that we don't put ourselves in a position where we're financing something longer than the equipment lasts, is there warranty for all these? And I'm sure calling these guys are going down that road, but that's something that as a councilman, I'm going to want to know before we actually make this plunge. I know at one time we had talked about meters that were time induced, where you went down and paid so much in the meter, you had a little, is that part of the system also?
That's one of the options, that you can be very aggressive with it, you can get different aspects of it, and that's one of those kind of A, B, C, or D, do you want the A model, the B model, the C model, or none at all, and that's something you can add on later, but in my mind, that's something that I think is really helpful for this system, that would help us in Smithfield, that would help us in a lot of areas, both administratively behind the office side, but also out in the field, we spend a lot of time in that. We spend a lot of time in that very area. This will be, I think, be one of those, we would net substantial funds every year with that automated system in that way. And that's exactly what it is. To refer to is that pay-as-you-go, there's different versions of it out there, but the market, and it's been out there four, five, six years now, the market has narrowed down to two or three options there that everybody seems pretty happy with.
Is everybody doing it openly or is it held?
Municipalities or even co-ops or other utility companies that have it installed. I know I experienced one when I was in Brunswick County that, that was used and out there early on, and they changed theirs once or twice, they've had the same one for three or four years now, and it's a great system. I can tell you the cost and how they funded it. It works great, and it's, it's, it is the, and it's good for the consumer too. If some consumers want that, they want to see how much they're using, and they like the ability to pay, I want to pay the second and third week of the month because that's when I get paid, and so it's convenience to them, and so it, it works both ways. Certainly helps us because we don't have to worry about collection and everything else, we just, we get the money, the power is on or off depending on what they pay, but it's convenience to the, to the consumer. We like, we like to pay on the, on the first and the fifteenth, but I only get my power bill on the twentieth, and so that doesn't always work for me. So it works both ways, but I think is a, is a good, a good relationship with our customers.
I'll take two, real quickly, did not delay, but this, when we first started, those little councilmen sometimes knows that the initial cost of a project like this was ten, fifteen million dollars. The cost to come down, just the annual cost, four or about, that is, about a billion dollars to keep it maintained. So the cost had come way down, and the improvements have come way up, so just, just give you a little bit of comfort that time and waiting for us has been a positive thing, not jumping in on anything, so just a little thought there.
Nothing else, we'll go to the add-on, which was the pass-through sewer treatment. Just to measure real quickly, do you want to do that for us? Or just pop?
Back a few weeks ago, when we were, we worked for an hour, that's for fiscal year. We also approved for us to do a pass-through sewer increase, and the, the increase to us, annual dollar amount, ninety-four thousand, three hundred dollars a gallon. And that was fifteen cents per thousand gallons that the county placed for the two. And Mr. Stevens, I just want to make sure that there wasn't some misunderstanding as the popular rate increase to the, whatever, whatever we have a, an increase on sewer side, you know, it's not only the, not only paying for what our customers send down our sewer lines and place water, we're also paying, we're having to pay for that INI that gets into our sewer, so that goes to the sewer plant industry as well. But the actual increase, we, we spread across quite for our consumers, but instead of fifteen cents, it's actually twenty-four cents per thousand gallon.
I, I don't, I don't understand.
Yeah, I don't understand.
How is raising, how is the county raising the rate fifteen cents per thousand gallons, increasing the inflow and infiltration?
Well, if, if, if we were just paying for what our consumers put into the sewer line, it would just be a straight fifteen cents per thousand gallon, but we also have to pay to have that, that thirty-eight percent of, you know, INI put into our system, but we have to pay to have that treated as well. So yes, spread out over, over to Paul stuff.
But, but, but like I said, it is, it's often, it's, sometimes you gotta wrap your head around in a strange way. Look at it this way, if, if all the red payers, if they use one hundred gallons of, or, it's not the best word, if we have to process one hundred gallons of sewer, that's what the rate, that's what the actual consumer is, one hundred gallons, that's our total consumer use. What happens is because of the infill infiltration of other liquid water, hundred and fifteen gallons actually goes into our system.
But this has nothing to do with the amount, it has to do with the cost.
Well, because we pay the county for a hundred and fifteen gallons of process, not a hundred. So if there's an increase of the county by fifteen cents, we're having to pay for basically, I'm using a rough number, of every hundred gallons, fifteen gallons that is rainwater, stormwater that gets into our sewer system, that goes into our system, and then it goes and is charged back to us by the county. So the county's increasing our rate that we're paying them, we've got to, we've got to spread that rate over all users, basically, because there is, and it's not a perfect system in the sense of for every hundred gallons used, there's a hundred and fifteen gallons we're paying for because of the infiltration. So.
Was the infiltration?
It comes from, you know, groundwater. We, probably thirty-eight percent, just based on some reason, some conditions that I did, thirty-eight percent of our expense, our peak expenses is just for groundwater infiltration.
So, let me ask more question. So the fifteen cents we charge, we pass through to our residents.
Right.
Will not pay the ninety-four thousand three hundred dollars.
Right, right, yes, it's, Paul, we're, we're, we're treating more water than what our customers are putting into the system.
Are we, are we covering our costs right now?
We are, sure we are.
So how we, how we, how we covering our costs right now?
We're not, there's not going to be an increase, I mean, yes, over the last three weeks, right, yes, just kind of on soon, and.
Well, it's something.
And it's probably into residential lines from whole construction lines or over there. Which we know we have infrastructure problems and we're working on that, but it's still, it's still not.
The county is not, the county is not treating the whole, the sewer segment through us at all.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
Yes, that's what.
Yes, it is.
So.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, they're definitely treating it, but I'm not sure how an increase in the county's price.
Well, what's the current county rate and what is our current rate?
The county currently charged with this increase, it'll be two dollars and eight cents per thousand gallon.
What is our?
Currently, before the increase goes into the thickness of the system, ours, I believe it's somewhere around six, six dollars per thousand, I don't know the exact number, it's right in that number, but, per thousand.
So they're charging two eighty and we're charging six?
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't know the exact, the exact number, but it's, it's five something, I haven't had to look at the fact.
Oh, you know, we talked about all this other stuff. I've heard very little conversation about our sewer lines that are on the council. Vic just invited me, they were redoing sewer lines somewhere in town, but I mean, if we're leaking, if our sewer lines are leaking, how come we don't have a big project going on to fix it?
Well, actually, we, we have projects going on. We did a project in West Smithfield where we did smoke studies and made improvements to the sewer lines in West Smithfield.
Replace sewer lines or maybe improve?
We relined, depending on what, what the problem was, some just required a point repair, we just dig down and, you know, put a, put a, you know, saddle something on it. And some required, we're relining the lines. Actually, our, our infiltration, we reduced it significantly. When I came in two thousand seven, which I use that as like a benchmark, our, our, it didn't rain that year, I mean, that was the year that we were straddling a hundred years. I've always used that as a benchmark. Right now, we continue to work on that, so we're, we're right at or below where we were in, in two thousand seven. So we're making headway on this.
And we also had a project, Councilman Harris, in South Smithfield, did the smoke studies in, in an area of South Smithfield as well. I'm not sure what type of prod.
That was relying the project. Yeah, that was relying.
Right, so we actually did some improvements there as well, and, and we've been discussing about setting aside this money, a certain percentage of money for the last couple of budget sessions, as far as making improvements for, to our infrastructure, and so I mean, there may not be that project, if you will, that we've discussed, putting aside money for our infrastructure needs and stuff like that.
I think it's been set aside, there's a new water sewer for, about, I mean, we've got several million dollars in there, absolutely.
In the water sewer.
For, for these kinds of projects.
If the county charged at two eighty and we're at six, we're way above the county.
No, no, that's the wholesale rate. I know the county built a retail rate and we can find it pretty easily, but that's a wholesale rate you charge for wholesale, sell the sewer.
That's what they're selling to us for, I want to know what their rate was to their customer.
Right, their customer rate is high, I don't know what it is, I've seen it before.
It's higher than ours.
If I'm not, if I'm not mistaken yet, we're low on them, I know we are on water and sewer is either the same or you think they're a little bit higher than us, they're higher. In terms of their retail rate, what they charge, they have a direct retail customer. If you remember, the, the wholesale is just for the processing of the sewer, and then when the county charges a retail rate for their customers, they have to do distribution, maintenance, and everything else, and then that's where we add on the difference between the wholesale rate, and then we have to do our district or our collection, maintenance of the lines and all that, that's really the difference in cost on infrastructure.
Any other questions?
So.
Thank you. Okay, council, you've got, you've heard the presentation, Earl's presentation, he says it's going to require twenty-four cents to cover a thousand gallons to cover the cost.
When is this, the county, the county, the county?
What year is it, did you say August one for this one?
The, the county was paid on July one, and I would have to pay the first week of the office.
Well, we already got a big spread between what we charge and what the county charges us, I wonder if we're inclined to pass the cost of fifteen cents along, if that poses being a problem, we increase it to twenty-four or forty-eight later.
I'd like it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Bush is second, say fifteen cents, all those are voted right?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor. Did you get the vote?
Yes.
Okay. I think it was unanimous, right? Mr. Mayor, manager, if you will, can you maybe have Earl put something a little more in detail about this? I'm still, I'm sorry, I knew, I don't understand it, I don't understand why.
Sure.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to grasp it. If we're covering our cost right now, what we're charging, and we're covering the cost of INI, I just don't understand just an increase from the county, if we match that, why we wouldn't be covering our costs now?
We're not processing more.
Right, now, I also understand that because of the recent weather that we've had over the three weeks, that we're gonna have a higher sewer's bill because of that. Now, if that's the reason why we need to raise our rates, that's a total different story, and I can understand that, but I cannot, I just can't understand, and I need help. So I'm asking, you know, whether we, we take this offline, and, you know, maybe we can sit down and have a discussion, but I just, I just simply can't grasp it. So I agree with Mr. Ashley, let's, let's set it at fifteen, we need to revisit it if we can.
Okay. Ask that motion, and we'll get clarity, Earl will let you in. Yeah. Okay, under my reports, we were brief, I mentioned to you last time that we will be having a joint resolution signing of the three communities with Benson, Selma, and Smithfield. We did that here in these chambers the other, last week I believe it was, back in the stand towards Electric Cities and to local higher agency of keeping our rates as constant or lower to combat our higher rates. We also use that, this council approved that same resolution, it's all identical to what this council adopted, and we added in that also to work together on expenditures like we discussed, purchasing water meters, power poles, and so on, and so on, and continue to work together with the community. So we had the mayor of Selma, Cheryl Oliver, and we massed a deal here, and we signed that together to show our due faith as three communities serving together. The other thing Mr. Johnson addressed is our July fourth is now to the July seventh celebration. We will make sure the media gets that out so that we can have good result there. That's what I've got for my main report tonight. Does councilman anyone have any comments under their section?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of things I want to talk about. First of all, I want to thank the council for their diligence and staff on approving my new budget, a long tedious process, and I apologize that I had to miss a couple of meetings due to business, but, you know, when you sign up for this job, you initially think about it once a month, and I don't know if anybody keeps a tab, but it seems like we're making twenty times a year. But with that said, and with our history a little bit here in Smithfield, there's a couple of things that I wanted to, to bring up, and I'll bring them up in a forum of motions. I have two motions that I'd like to make, and then I have one request that I would have liked to make. Given our history in the not-too-distant future with some issues with salary increases that we're not aware of, I'd like to make a motion to freeze all hiring, promotions, and all pay raises without the approval of the council at our regularly scheduled monthly meeting. That's the motion.
Let's discuss it. Just, just for clarification, Mr. Harris, does this motion include any positions that we included in the budget, since we've already approved the budget with positions in there?
This would be to report to us for approval on any hirings, promotions, and pay raises.
Not approved in the budget.
No, including, even if it's in the budget, we need to make sure that there's something that we didn't see in the budget, like several years ago.
So just clarification, if, and we're hiring police officers or firefighters probably every month, you want to, that?
Just very simple, very simple, bring it up as to what's going on, and just sort of know what's going on.
What about the, the new position of the assistant aquatic superlager in the budget that we're advertising for right now?
I mean, we could, we've already approved it. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is that with that.
That's in the budget and what, but you just.
I don't think you really, I mean, are you, I know I want to put words in your mouth, but I mean, talking about.
Going forward, anything new? So, you know, as an example, are there, are there any pay raises or merit pay raises that we're not aware of that we're planning? And that, that's what it keeps us from doing.
I just want, I knew we had that one position, no, at least one, or, I think it was the strag.
It's not, it keeps the council advised of what's going on.
I have no problem if that's, we're all agreed on that.
Now, is that something, so the manager's clear, I'm just asking of his clarity, is that something he could do in a monthly report, a weekly report that he does now, or is that something he wants to bring back to?
I think that, my motion was it'd be done on a monthly basis at the, at the council meeting.
You agree? Well, one clarity for me, are you saying that, that freeze all hiring, et cetera, without the approval of the council, are you saying you want us to approve all the hires going forward?
Just to say that if we lose three policemen at that meeting, either the police chief or whoever can come to us and say we need to replace three police people, like your approval to our three people.
So if we find a, a new full-time finance director tomorrow, we'll have to wait till the August meeting to have approval to that?
You've got to start somewhere. It's a finance director, he's approved budget?
Yes, yes.
That's what I want to clarify.
Yes, that's what.
You think it's already approved in this, in our budget? We've already approved it, we just approved it.
Right.
Two weeks ago.
Correct. I think it's anything going forward.
That's correct.
Clarification on your motion that has been seconded.
Anything going forward.
That's correct.
Again, this is an odd practice, as I'm just trying to understand it. You said earlier that if the three policemen that we're hiring that are replacements spots and those have all been approved in the budget.
No, I'm just saying as an example, if we had to hire twelve firemen, that we should have the ability, given our past history here in Smithville, to have the fire chief come to us at the following meeting and ask for our blessing.
And we can do that, but you just said it was already approved and those have already been approved in the budget, those have all been united and so.
Talking about going forward, we have approved the budget, so anything not in the budget going forward for the rest of the year, I'm making a motion that we have to approve it.
Okay, and so for the record, I'm thinking that mean if we hire a five, we have to like here and get approval for it?
Basically.
Okay, well, I mean, just to be clear, because I've heard two different things, that mean.
Because not in the budget.
Okay, but every position in the budget, every position in our town is in the budget, what you're saying?
New hires are not in the budget.
But it's.
The position is in the budget.
Okay, but then what's the difference there, I'm just trying to understand again.
The difference is they're new employees. And I think this council ought to be aware of what's going on.
No, I agree and that's fine, but when I hired aquatic director, that's a new employee, it was approved in the budget. So if you're saying I don't have to have that approved, what's the difference between that case and?
If the aquatic director were to leave, you would have to come to us to hire someone else.
Yeah, I think what, I think what Councilman Harris is actually saying is any, not the positions, any new people hired after tonight, excluding. Excluding the finance director position and the aquatic supervisor position. Those are the only two quote unquote new hires that I am aware of. The other positions are they, are, yes, they're in the budget if you will, but they're not. Those are the only two new positions, and they're not new, finance director is not a new position.
Uh huh.
Yeah, but.
Can I quit part-time too? Yeah, I was just asking.
That's a good question.
I want to understand, I'll do it every morning.
If the money is put in the budget, we need to report on any new hires, we need to report on anybody who's going to replace someone.
Harry, as I read this, it looks like you're asking for us to approve and give the blessing of anything. Do you want to be informed of a new hire or to sit here and say, I move that we allow this person to be hired?
You know, hiring is one of the issues, you know, there's also the pay raises. Pay raises have been a problem here in Smithville. I think it's just a safeguard for the council at this moment to try to stay within our budget limitation.
Any more discussion? Is everyone clear?
I've got a question. Question, Paul, manager. Is this request also, is it included in the handbook, the whole handbook already? That it has to come through councilman Harris, new positions or motions?
No.
It's not in the handbook?
And so I think that's, I think that's the issue is that, to be clear, we're misunderstanding it, it's, I don't think Councilman Harris is talking new position, I mean, yes, that's part of it, but it's, I think we're all a little confused.
So you want me to wait until next month after the budget gets adjusted to make the motion? And you need to do it now.
No, that's not, that's not what I'm saying. I think we're saying positions, new positions, all is saying, and we're saying, and you've stated that if it's approved in the budget, all saying all the positions are approved in the budget. So, but I don't think that's what you want to know, you want to know if we, like you said, if you have three police officers leave, you want, you just, you want.
That is.
Brought back.
That is correct.
To the council. So we can get the blessings at that time based off our current financial conditions. Do we, do we fill those two, three positions or do we fill one of the positions at the time? I just use police as.
Looking back at history, I think you're referring to, had certain pay raises been brought to the council within thirty days, a lot of problems could have been heard in one month as opposed to now every year here.
There's no reflection on anybody, it's just a safeguard, is all it is.
But I just think, you know, we just got to be clear for Paul, like you said, does that include part-time positions? Because if so, we need to be.
Do they, you have to have part-time people like them are? But position is there, you just need to know that we're fulfilling those positions. You need to know what's going on. It's a safeguard.
Any more questions?
Mr. Mayor, the second one I have is, has to do with the line item budget. I think given the fact that we have been able to maintain our ability to work with our employees on their health benefits and I think again as a austerity measure, I'd like to make a motion that we restrict movement of funds from one line item to another line item to a maximum of one thousand dollars. Added to or subtracted from any line item without the approval of the council at our regularly scheduled monthly meetings. And what that means is if you have a line item in your budget and you want to move a thousand dollars into that line item, or if you want to move a thousand dollars out of that line item, you can do that up to a thousand dollars without the approval of the council. If anything over that, you would have to come to the council at our regularly scheduled monthly meeting for approval. Give us a, an ongoing picture of our line item budget.
No discussion, motion is second.
I've got it written down, I can hand to him.
All those a favor, right?
Aye.
And one more thing, Mr. Mayor, I don't think this need to be done in a form of a motion, but I would like, and I've had some conversation with the town manager, I believe already on this. We get end of the year and we prepare a budget and that budget changes throughout the year. And I would like to ask the town manager, or I'd like the council to ask the town manager to prepare a completed year-end budget, which I see that you're doing that, Paul. But one thing I would like to have next to that is the initial budget that we approved by line item. That would show us the initial budget by line item and then it would show us our final budget by line item. And it would give us a record of where we stand the year we stayed within our budget, where we may have moved money, where we may have spent money. But I would like to ask to get those together so that we can compare. That was not a motion?
Yeah.
Just something I would like to throw out to the council to see if you agree with me.
I agree with one, I'll answer that in your face. The great soul of the president, give our job.
Does that need to be in the motion? As this council calls.
Make a motion to the right, the town manager prepare a completed year-end budget report that shows our initial budget approved compared to the year-end actual numbers of the budget.
Here you go, all those a favor, right?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Basically, we do everything except season back down. If you want introduction to it, I mean, the manager's agents, they show you the appropriate amount, first column is the budget amount. And then you can see where it is in actual experience service. And then we do a year-end statement, it's got budget amounts and then actual amounts based for every year. People have that, at least for me, I'm pretty honored by me.
I think what we're seeing is that the numbers passed last June, not adjusted for amendments.
Have to.
Well, yeah, I mean, these are adjusted for the amendments we did right here.
The, the document that I'm saying that you, it's got that, it's got budgeted, it's got the actual basically, and we'll add a column. I think the one that I've seen that's different, that actually has budgeted, there's a column for amendment budget amount, that was sort of that, and then the actual number, shit, that's how it basically.
Yeah, yeah, so it's adjusted, actually, under all this, it's a daily.
Right.
Any other council comments?
Yeah, well. Now, Mr. Mayor, it's getting to be, some of the communities, especially my community, it's getting to be ridiculous. We've got weeds and things growing up and as tall as the houses, some of it, like North Street, Orchard Street, you know, or like, or Parrish Street. Some of these places have not been touched, to show that they's, there's abandoned houses and places, but yet still, still living in these communities side by side. Something has to be, can't just keep right on this town about, I think, someone is paying taxes, somebody is in charge of it. And so there need to be grass or whatever need to be taken out of these houses. I mean, something else, if it's there, and I'm, these are the worst ones, but there's a lot of places that have been, they cut the grass and I guess because it's raining. But this, these are places where it don't look like there's, they did not a whole year.
Well, do you know, do you know that our court officer has an address, um, if you or the person that's contacted you about it, you know that they've actually afford those or if you have them or you have the street names, I mean.
Well, I, I, Ward Street and Blunt Street, and some of it, see, some of it, actually the numbers of the houses, you can't see because you can't see the front of the house just about. But these are, and some of these places here is the same place we had a problem with last year. You know, it's just a thing that go round and round in the circle, unless someone just gets down and keep right on, and keep right on, nothing is being.
There are a couple of houses right across from police station, on that block.
You know, I remember meeting Chief Scott a couple of years ago and walked out the door and there were still two houses over there. I talked to Lenny, they said, yeah, we have to go cut them, they go cut them, they charge them a nominal fee. That's exactly what Charles was talking about. And my suggestion at that time, or my conversation was that, you know, the first time we ordered to charge them, I don't know if it's a hundred and fifty dollars, the next time we order to charge them three hundred, the next time we order to be six hundred. Obviously, what we're doing is providing landscaping service for these absentee or non-caring landlords. So it's a problem that I believe I've talked with Mr., Paul Engler about it and I don't know what our barriers are with that, but certainly we need to tighten down on that because it's not just in Charles area, it's over there right in front of the police department. And it just keeps on and on and on and on and on. And there should be something, I don't know if there's something legally we can do, if we can change our ordinances, but, and I'm sure there's others around town too, not just in those two locations.
There are, there's a lot, and the ones that I've mentioned, that is not, it's not, it leaves a lot of severe. And then don't let them touch, but there's others that, that need behind. And one more thing, that the semi-place on Seventh Highway went out, trucks are still being parked over there. And the trails, you know, they're dropping the trails and going out. Now, when something really seriously happens, hopefully, we can't say whether we're getting over. These people, some of them brought the trailers, work on the trails over there. And, you know, despite this trip.
But, may I say something? I called recently, in fact, I called Mr. Engler on vacation earlier this week, is that correct? Or no, last week?
Yeah, I ended last week.
And I was kind of hounded a little bit because we had had a letter that, the head of the insurance commission, Bobby Worsham, and I had taken over to Dan Havner to get permission to do the patrolling over there. And what I've learned is it's not that simple. The letter that we gave Mr. Havner had to be revised, it's gone from Paul to the police chief to the town attorney and I don't know where it is right now, but I asked Mr. Havner, last Tuesday night, I saw him at a function and I asked him if he had signed that letter and he said no, so I got it, was, finally figured out Paul was on vacation. And he said that it was out of his hands at the time, it had been bouncing back as far as he knew between the city attorney and the police chief because there's liability involved on private property. And of course, this brings up the Kmart situation where at one time there were eight trailers at Kmart. And we got the same deal going on over there that somebody in California is that. And I guess we're going to have to go down the road with them the same way. And it's just taken a lot longer than I ever dreamed it would. And it made me wonder if our coordinates could be changed or whether, to, where we can do that. And anyway, there has been work being done on that, but you're right, there's still a park there.
Yeah, did you try to change the deal with the, I think, they, they, they talked to our regulation director about it and how they talked through.
I would hope Mr. Engler or the police chief knows that.
You know.
But I did make an effort last week, thanks to Mr. Worsham, rang my bell again about it. I had been out of town and like I said, as far as I know, it's still in the works to get the landowner to sign that letter so we can start enforcement, but does anybody know where that is?
The copy's run, I got it back, when I got back into town, I've run the copy and I'll give it to Mr. Worsham and have Mr. Havner sign it.
Thank you.
And I'll report back to you. We need to follow suit with.
Maybe my Christmas present?
If you're lucky, now maybe a retirement present.
Oh, yeah, that's, 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 yeah, that's, that's, well, you do that for me.
But, but.
That's something to work out, I need to work out, please, pardon, that is concerning, I'm sorry, that, the.
Kmart.
Back to yards, I don't know what is that again, but yards, and then the two levels of problems on that, both of those are addressable, just a little. First one is, if the town uses offshore, it can deal with it, probably can deal with it in small plants in the center. He just doesn't know who the lawyers are, if they're big leaners on these properties and those properties are sitting there and having their full close. So we ask them about those, so those he can deal with. But the others, he should be able to deal with, they have small plants, that may not do anything, but then eventually you can give them the big, sort of, type of, full close, the profits will slow. If we go down to one way, Fuller Street, but it's a little slow, but it's a bit there. Full stream, but it will slow, but it's been there after four months. By the way, that's sort of speaking. How are we on that for a minute? We've done everything on that except we cannot find.
Last Christmas of 2020.
Uh, we can't find some layers, so we can advertise, it's been advertised right now, advertising process is 40 days. I have it. By average of 40 days. Then you have to get it charged, you have to care down next stop. Uh, you're, you're, you know, 60 days, nine days.
Appreciate it. Uh, I, I, you know, I just, just want to make sure, I, I can't explain some kind of need, takes a time.
One lady over there calls me about every 40 days.
Good.
She's doing good.
So, okay, any other, any other council comment?
Just, just briefly, a couple of things. One, um, I think I reported you the last couple of weeks, uh, last month or so, the water reuse line that was an installation. That's a county project, uh, in certain parts of town, primarily in the Wilson, Wilson Road, uh, Vermont, uh, area, Vermont Street area. It looked like that was getting, getting completed pretty quickly, pretty much on time. We're doing the work on that water reuse line, basically in the right of way on the edge of the pavement in some of those streets. We went back and they, they provided the patch pavement and a good bit of which was not acceptable. So they're having to, uh, basically take up some of that base and reinstall new base and work it out so that it's going to meet our requirements. So it looked like that project was getting closer to being complete. Now they're going to have to go back and redo some of that, um, improvement because otherwise it would leave our streets in, um, in kind of a bumpy unsettled state. So again, this is a county contractor who's on that project and, um, they're working with them to get it to, uh, an acceptable state. So I want to let you know that it's going to take a little bit longer.
Paul.
These trucks out there, um, that's why they're still there.
On that, Paul, what was it? What's the timeline for completion of that project, the original?
Um, again, you know, it's a county contract. I think that'd hope to be done by June, uh, if I remember correctly.
June the 3rd, Monday, we're pushing for a day. I'm submitting, I'm doing that on Friday.
Right.
That's Monday, we're supposed to, before the payday, and it didn't pay, get that and do the other.
Yeah, I mean, they've had weather delays in addition to, I think there's, uh, as there are many roads in Smithfield, there's some, uh, there's some base issues that they try to use a standard base and it's just not enough base or the right kind of base. And then when they do the test on it, um, it's just not compatible. So they go back and do this. I've got a, uh, pretty good summary in my report on the Smithfield Crossing project. Um, again, still moving through, still got a few delays on the, the standard, uh, utility locations, although we had a good meeting today, which is summarizing the report in terms of getting those, um, some of those, uh, Century Link and, um, Time Warner Cable delays squared away. So again, if you haven't been out there lately, the, um, the, um, Road A and Road B, the areas behind the H station there, they are paved and in pretty good shape. They have a little more work to do to finish it, but they've got a good pavement base there. Um, if we get through these right of way delays, um, we're hoping that the rerouting can occur again, maybe in August or early September now. And then that would give them time to, um, to start the round, the roundabout, which is the main, uh, next step of this project, you know, closer to that, uh, turn in from industrial Parkway where it hit 70. So that's the next big step. Um, there was a little bit of a signage issue with DOT and US DOT in terms of what they would approve, that was sure the rerouting there, so we're working through that along with the utility, um, uh, locations and getting those lines moved. But again, it's, um, it's moving, uh, they've been out there pretty busy. I think, um, PLT, the main contractor on this portion of the project, uh, they're finishing up the installation of that 72 inch, um, straw mortar pipe. That's getting pretty close, and so hopefully these other delays will be completed so they can move on to that as soon as we're, uh, through that, uh, 72 inch pipe. Want to let you know that we did have, uh, wrap up the meetings on Monday with Municipal Solutions who's handling our employee pay benefits. Uh, that, that went pretty well, pretty good process there, which, uh, helped our employees a good bit this year. So we got a good start on that, but that's, uh, pretty much completed except for, uh, the adjustments to the payroll. So pretty much through all our benefit conversions for this upcoming fiscal year. Still a little bit of administration to take care of. And finally, Mayor, um, on the landscaping, I think most of you saw it today, if you didn't see it earlier, but the crew actually finished on Friday afternoon, Saturday morning this past weekend, where they got the shrubs and the pine straw placed around Town Hall, looks great. So we had landscaper and also a lineage crew helped out there too, so they got that in right in the fiscal year, which is good to see and, uh, and a good job there. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Paul, I've got, I've got a question, um, just to comment regarding the, the Crossings project. It seems like every single, every month recently, the, the report has been that the, the movement of these, the utilities, um, is progressing. I would, and then the comment here is Time Warner indicated that they would be moving them as soon as possible. I would like to know what as soon as possible is. And I would like to make a motion that we have a plan in place and an agreement in place. It doesn't, they don't have to be moved, but I want a timeline in place for the movement of all utilities by July the 19th. I put that in form of the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Is that a plan or an agreement?
That, that is an agreement.
With Time Warner?
With Time Warner, Century Link, all utilities that are in, that are, that are holding up progression of this project. It has been going on and every single month, it is, it's progressing, but it, and it's as soon as possible. And I understand, and then I get emails that, well, we're dealing with people in Texas. Well, so what? We have telephones and email. Well, let's get on a plane and go see them, or whatever it takes. But location should not matter.
Well, just tell them they got to do, they're going to do it, and if they don't do it, we're going to dig holes right through whatever they got. And this has been going on for 10 months. Six months.
I wish it was that short a period of time.
I mean, I would like, I understand we have limited resources.
Happy to, Mayor, happy to call you.
And I'll tell you, if you know, it's tough with utilities, but remember, they have a right to be in the right way. They're, they're there, and so again, trust me, I feel your pain, no question about it. But there are certain rights and limitations that we have to be respectful of, but they don't have to read anything. And we can ask them to read, they can say, go jump on the lake, and then what are we going to do?
But we're just.
Most of that, by the way, is not our right way. It's DOT right way.
Who approved the project? Who's overseeing the project?
Well, but.
If their engineers overseeing this project?
Want to know why it is like this? DOT doesn't do a contract, and this is not their contract unless they have all utility relocation squared away before they even contract. That has not happened here, and we're paying for us for it. So in a nutshell, that's where it is. So that's why DOT does that, because they are a long time ago, that's a few, utility relocation before you contract, before you give out. So if you ask the contractors, they're going to say that should have happened, we're going to have a contract, they should square that away. They're going to say we can't even do that because you have Century Link or Time Warner Cable or some other, you know, utility out there. We're saying we'll get to them, you know, for that. It's extremely frustrating, but, um, I will let, I will let you know something.
I'm not saying they have to be moved, but let's have a plan and an agreement of what dates when they. That's a motion.
Say that again?
It, well, sorry, second, but it's a, a motion to have a plan in place by July 19th for an agreement of dates of when the utilities will be moved.
We have a motion and a second of that. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
We're good to our ears. If not, all those favor eye?
Aye.
Vote. Okay, let's see if we can get into the reaches of dates.
I mean, the last thing I had, um, was going back to the, um, Paul, the, um, the RADA program for the improvements in, uh, East Smithfield. As part of that process, um, and again, given some of the conversations with the council and some of the input, felt like there was a need and, uh, as one of the requirements of the project, to have, um, another public hearing, uh, and have it with the council. We'd like to do that, we need to have a public hearing for that project anyway. If we could do that, we can meet the requirement for the project and also have the council have a chance, if it wants to, to give any inputs as part of that project. And again, we can advertise and have that done. If we could do that, you know, Mayor, your call, um, really in the next two weeks, I know that's pretty soon, but, um, to meet another deadline that we could, we could meet for that project to move it along, we could do it as early as, yes, that would be a great date. That's a Monday, a week from this Monday. We love you. Same, the same one, uh, Water Springs project, the RADA, uh, project for the improvements, the same one that, when this goes.
Is he able to? If you want to.
Yes. You know, the, the guy that's, you know, giving a word, I mean, he was, you know, heck, this is a problem I have, it's he, he does vote it because he do all of his things, and I was still saying something, but, you know, I think I want to make sure that whatever we say is what we're going to do. That's the only thing, all of them will make sure. Now, if we're going to have a meeting, a public meeting, worst thing he did, and he didn't explain himself to us, and I said, I hope the council, I'd rather have him here on a, on, 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 on the council now, so they, you know, they can get their rep.
Well, if it's a special meeting, which is what I'm suggesting, I mean, it'll be.
Yeah, it's a special meeting, it's definitely a point, a point of trying to make it, is that, see, we have these meetings, but some of the people, they make special efforts, they're trying to make special efforts, we need a city council meeting, I don't know where they can be, it's on the other, I hope they leave, but, uh, this, this, this worthless thing, though, I, uh, who, the things that he showed me, I don't like him. I don't think he's, look, they've been power off the head. I, I don't think we should get anybody, and, you know, if we're going to get someone, we should get someone, but he's not the person we need to get, but, uh, every year.
Well, I think that gives, again, a lot of time for everybody to air their concerns and their, but, you know, we could have that meeting, we could do it again at the council meeting in August or September, but if we could have that meeting, I think that'd help them with one of their grant requirements.
We're talking about July 15th, probably not.
Special meeting?
Yeah.
Call the timing, we need to have this, or?
Need to have a little photo here, of the project, of the grant.
Do we get to change, uh, we have one, one, uh, change the other time?
Well, you could have, um, you could have that meeting and have another one at their August meeting too, if you want to have a follow-up or getting ready for that one. I think it has to be about the 15th, is that right, Paul?
There's, there's the next step in the grant process, and this requirement has to be met by the 15th in order to proceed to the next step in the grant process, which has to do with training it, is, uh, East Carolina University associated with it, because it starts that week later.
So, so you're up.
And these things have been something, you know, they always want something, they have to have, it has to, you know, they, they always have to be in the latest meeting.
So what if we don't act on the 15th?
I suspect that the state will withdraw their offer for the grant.
Well, don't you, because we already have one portion of the grant, but you have some grant running that? Didn't get some?
We, the town hasn't finished filling, fulfilling the process to accept the grant.
Well, we told you, two months ago, we get extra money, we got, we received some money.
The, the criteria to get the money that we've been awarded has to require a public hearing, and that's what we're trying to establish a second public hearing for this grant. We didn't make the rule, the Department of Commerce set it.
I said what?
The Department of Commerce has set the rules, we have this public.
Yeah, but I know, uh, uh, when I was making, I was making my comments, I was just saying that we have received, I received the grant.
There were, and this is one of the conditions of the grant, you have this meeting, the grant was awarded to the town for this project, and this is one of the conditions of the grant.
So that night, we, uh, who else told me they got the grant, we didn't have it?
No, that's not right.
It was not right. We didn't have the grant.
Yeah, he's saying we do. We've been awarded it, we haven't received any money yet.
Well, I was told we had it, we had it, we had that some time.
No, you were told we received the grant via through your contractor.
I, hey, he told me, we had got a quarter of it.
Can we call?
Can I get a motion that we have it?
Yeah, I make a motion, we have that meeting on the 15th, um, 6:30.
All right, we have a motion at 6:30 on the 15th. We have a second, all those favor eye? Aye, opposed. Any further discussion before we go into closed session? We'll need to go into closed sessions and discuss personnel matters, suit NCGS 143, 3181186.
Who will be in the closed session?
Sorry?
Who will be in the closed session besides the council?
Council and the mayor.
So move.
We'll have a second. All those favor eye? Aye, opposed.